We appreciate those that have come, our guests and our prayers that's here with us. We appreciate you. I don't think our attorney is going to make it tonight. His mom's real sick in the hospital and I think he's not feeling that well too. So he'll be absent for the night's meeting, but we'll carry on. At this time, we'd like to have an indication and our pledge of allegiance and then we'll get started. Let's stand, please. Then we pause at this time to thank you for your minute blessings. Lord, we ask your guidance in this meeting tonight. We ask you to always be our guest as we meet. And may we conduct the city's business in a way that would be pleasing to the citizens of our community and most of all to you. Lord, we ask you to be with the leaders of our land, have decisions be made that's right for our communities, right for our state, right for our nation. We know there's a lot facing us and, Lord, we ask you to be in all decisions are made that your will might be carried forward. And we'll have a country, Lord, that everyone can be proud of. Lord, we ask you to bless our councils. We meet from time to time and our entire city government and workers as we progress together. Christ name, my pretty men. Let's have a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Item one, what our agenda tonight is the recommendation to approve the minutes of the August 5th meeting of the Hamilton City Council. And we need a motion on that.
I'd like to have a motion.
Chief, you made a motion. Would you second?
I'll second.
I'll say a second. All in favor of approving the minutes. Thank you. The second recommendation would be to change the date of our next city council meeting to Tuesday, September the 3rd, 2019 at 6:00 PM due to the city hall being closed on Monday, September the 2nd in observance of Labor Day holiday. So I'd like to recommend that we move it forward one day.
I'd like to have a motion.
I'll make the motion. Would you second?
I'll take it.
Would you make a second? All in favor of making that change. Thank you. Item three is a recommendation to allow Northwest Alabama Gas Company to attach a four-inch gas line to the bottom of the Grandview Drive Bridge. Mr. P. Three, the manager of Northwest Gas, will present and explain what they'll be doing. You'll come forward.
Appreciate it, Mayor. We discussed the other day. We have a need to crossway to Creek on Grandview Drive. We've made several attempts to bore that creek and been unsuccessful. So our next alternative would be to attach a line to the bridge. This is very common. We've got several lines within cities that are attached to bridges on state highways. Be no danger to the drivers across the bridge, but we wouldn't assume any liability for accidents or damage to the bridge.
Okay. How soon would y'all be acting on this?
Uh, we could start in the next couple of weeks and we hope to have the line in and operational before winter. We've got a lead over there that we can't supply the gas to that area right now.
Those four inches are pretty common size for a transmission line.
It's a distribution line. Yeah, four inches is really common. That's the largest distribution line we put in. We do have some high-pressure transmission lines that are up to 10 inches or more. They're common size.
Any other questions?
It's my understanding that we won't be obligated to anything that happens.
No, that's correct.
I don't think I... It's like everybody doesn't understand that we're not obligated in case something does happen.
That's correct. All that love and devotion.
All the love and devotion to the gas company.
That's correct.
Well, I've been assured, I've had to talk to inspectors for bridges, that this won't affect our inspections as far as the passing the inspection. And when those annual inspections come up, so...
That's correct.
And that was good news also.
I'd like a motion.
I got one question there. I know it's one of the contractors or something messed up the pavement pretty good over there. Do you reckon you can get one to fix that or you know what's going on?
Yeah, I wouldn't worry about that, but we'll take care of it.
Yeah. It's not liable ahead, but it's... We'll get them to take care of it ahead of time.
Any other comments or questions?
I'll make a motion. We accept that. I'll second.
Motion is taken. All in favor of allowing the company to put the line across.
We appreciate you.
You have unanimous consent from the council and myself, okay?
Okay. Appreciate you, Mayor.
We appreciate the gas company and all the good things y'all do for our city.
Please. Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, fourth item is a recommendation to allow the engineer Luke Porter to put the street project, the paving project that he put over with us out to bids and see how those come back. If we want to go forward with that project, we'll need to have a motion and a second to put it out to bids.
I'll make that motion.
No, motion needs a second.
I'll second.
Motion's a second. All in favor of putting that out to bids. Thank you very much. We will table our... We'll postpone our architect update from Ms. Harson since she didn't make the meeting tonight. Item six is to approve resolution 2019-8-19 that will approve the 2019 transportation plan for the city of Hamilton. And this is committing funds of $36,248 that are projected to be collected as the city of Hamilton's portion of the increased gas and fuel taxes for the Rebuild Alabama Act. The mayor and council are committing these funds to be used in 2020 for striping and realigning our streets in the city for the improvement of safety. And if y'all have any questions or comments before we bring that to the vote, then we'll...
Has this been bid out or are we just saying we're going to do it?
This is the new money that we'll be getting. Of course, we'll have to get the striping companies that do this to actually do it. They've got the trucks that roll along and put the, I believe, some $1,500 a mile maybe or so. This is kind of what it costs to strip if we do like a double striping each street. We've got some streets that people travel fairly fast on and I think the striping would be a nice addition to the streets. Help people stay on their side of the road and the cars and this kind of thing, so...
So we don't have to specify the streets. We just have to specify how we're using it? And if we don't use this entire amount for striping, there's no penalty? We can...
Okay. I think some of the cities that we've got examples from, if they weren't committing all their dollars, they were rolling it back into a fund that they could carry over for the next year. Each year for the three years, our portions going to grow just a little bit. This is only the six cents tax, then it'll be eight cents tax, then it'll be 10 cents tax. So that number, that $36,248, will increase for three years in a row.
So do we need to specify that any of this that isn't used for striping will be banked? Or, I mean, I just don't...
We're not going to intermingle it with our other funds. We're going to set up a special account for this. And we'll only spend what we committed monies for out of it. And if we have a balance left over, we'll just carry it forward for our use as needed for improvements. This tax money was...
38?
Rebuild Alabama Act is for improvements of infrastructure in our cities.
Where's this money coming from?
The six cent tax that's just been passed by the state on gasoline. Gasoline's going up September 1st, six cents to pay us this money. All cities in the state will get this money, prorated to the size of the city that they are.
And that tax is going to stay on from now on?
It's a state tax. It'll be six cents the first year, eight cents, and then 10 cents the third year. The governor's just passed this law and it wasn't about the county or the city doing it. It's the state law that gives us this new money.
And then that tax is going to stay on? They get it on there? All that tax is going to stay on from now on?
I would say, yeah. It'll probably never come back.
How did they ever get that passed?
Well, that's a good question.
I guess my question is, since we're specifying the entire amount for striping in 2020, if we don't use the entire amount, we still get to keep the money? We'll just have to, next year when we do the plan, we'll just say that X number of dollars were left over from 2020 striping and pick it up that way?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and we'll have a special account for this to come into and...
Excuse me. What I'm worried about is if we're going up on gas, six to 10 cents a gallon, and we're the only county doing that, is this the whole state?
The whole state.
The whole state. The whole state.
But it's still going to hurt us because we got states joining us where people don't... That's a lot, dude.
It's a lot.
We're the highest in gas tax in the state of Alabama.
What?
We are the highest in gas tax in the state of Alabama.
I know about already without this, so this is... You're talking about when you get down to eight years, you're talking about a bunch of extra tax. People going to drive somewhere else without gas.
There already are.
I just don't understand.
That's a minute, Ms. Harson. You're up next.
Okay.
I just don't understand, you know, why they would want to do that?
Well...
There's nothing we can do about it. It's not us.
It was the legislative item that did it and it's to rebuild roads and bridges across Alabama is the reason this tax was put on. But it was statewide. Every county's participating and every city will get benefits from it. The $36,248 just helps to be our first year of benefits from this tax. And then it's going to go to 40 some odd and likewise on up to maybe close to 57 or 60,000 in the third year.
Well, I'd like our citizens to know that we're not doing it. We're not doing the tax.
No, it's not us. We'll be the recipient of some of the fuel taxes and gas tax money, but we didn't pass the law that caused it to happen. Okay, we would need to pass this resolution for our transportation plan for the city and we need a motion and a second. And right now, all we're assigning money to is striping and realigning streets. At this point, we're not designated any streets out of this money for paving. It's just, and if we don't spend it all for striping and realigning, then we'll bank that money until we dedicate another project for that money.
Mayor, I'll make that motion for this.
No, I don't have a motion. Need a second.
Second.
It's second. We're up. I'll second. So all in favor of passing this resolution for our transportation plan. And we'll bank whatever funds we don't spend on striping and realigning.
It's a very bad thing.
Yeah.
It's going somewhere else if we don't.
The laws already in effect. Uh, announcements would be that Dale McCrayless is being reappointed to a five-year additional term with the Housing Authority Board. He filled out the unexpired term of Mr. Virgil McGuire who passed away. And he was happy serving on the board and I'm going to re-up him for another term on the Housing Authority Board. I did talk with Mr. Carter, the director, and she said he's been really interested and has attended, reads his minutes and comes up with good ideas for that housing authority board. So they will be serving another term, a reappointment. Anna Margaret Bailey has been appointed to the communication board for a three-year term. And addition, that's two boards that we'll have new membership on, one reappointed, one renewed. Item seven, Ms. Laura Crawford is here with us tonight. Ms. Laura's a concerned citizen. She has issues on her mind such as some taxes she's been studying on, a retail concerns, her love for Hamilton. She's retired and plans to live out her life here in Hamilton. And she just wants some better things for Hamilton and she wanted to come and address our council. And we've given her four minutes of our time tonight. Ms. Laura, you'll need to come to the podium and do your speaking from the podium.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for having me. My problem is back in 1990s, we had tax for school, which was supposed to come off. Was supposed to come out when we were there.
Wait, wait a minute.
We had us tax put on our schools and they said, "Would you..." I didn't mind doing that, but they were taking off the binding. I called the ethics committee. They found it. So y'all can't find something wrong with it. They found it down there. And they said they're married to the only one that can take it off. And that...
I'm going to turn the volume down some of things up here.
Okay, well, I think it will be good one. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
And then another thing is that penny tax on that tire truck. We, the citizens, did not go on that. They're married before Mr. Williams. He put it on that. We didn't ask for that. We don't need that. This city should have 7% sales tax right now, taking those two taxes off. And another thing is with this way, with them buying everything else, you want that... The city council and the mayor wants us to retire. We can't retire. No children are our future that's going to school here. They got no way to go, no activity in missing. Okay, we doesn't want them to have activity. She opened up there, businesses was leaving. If you could look at all your records, businesses were moving out because of that. The skate rink, skating center she had, she promised Chuck, I can't think of what's named that one. She opened, she fixed up she was going to reopen. She never reopened it again. Okay, she just bought that hotel. People out in the street, I guess, have no place to go. When you have homeless people in the city of Hamilton, people don't know about it. I've seen people giving them, and I gave them my life's dollar, give them something. And I don't think it's right. It's reflecting bad on the city of Hamilton. So those two penny taxes need to come off. And the only one that can do it, the city council can't do it. He can do it because they said he has to call and do it. Because I called the ethics committee last week, the week before that, and then this past month, and today. He's the only one that can do it. And if he has anything that wants to be done for the city, please don't stop him from doing it because he's trying to make the city a perfect city for not only us that's retiring, but our children. Think about us retiring. How can we retire you when there's nothing here? The taxes are so high. When these people fix their income, they have to use their money to buy groceries and that sales tax coming out of them for that. Someone's going to have those things. Think about our children when they graduate. They have to go to Hewin, to the drive-through, to drive-in theater. We have no drive-in theater no more. There's nothing here for our kids and our kids is the future. And I want to retire. I love this city. I've been here. When I first moved here, it's, the whole place was booming. The sidewalks were thick. The plazas wasn't as messed up as they are now. Whoever owns those plazas needs to fix those parking places out there. And, you know, Mr. Mayor here, he's doing his best to bring this city up. And he will get my vote when he goes again. And also whoever's stopping him, he has the right to put in the paper what he's stopping him from bringing. Their names, what he's bringing to the city. Why they want to stop them. And that way, they won't get voted again. I know a lot of people who told me that. They will not vote them back in again.
Ms. Laura, that tax you mentioned, tell us the nature of that tax. You say that was a school tax?
School tax back in 1990s, something, uh, it was the mayor that he teach them that.
Can you give that information to our city clerk and we're going to check with that ethics commission?
Because it was taken off five years.
Eliminate that.
In 1995, I think, or it was taken off before 2000 and it never came off.
If it's a tax that can be eliminated and should be, of course, we want to act on that. If some way or other that tax has been shifted for another purpose, then we'll have to find out.
At that time, we were at five cents.
Adam, could you give some information for us?
I'll try my best to find out.
We were at five cents on the dollar at that time when that happened. We went from five cents to six cents when that came on and they go back to five cents when that went off.
For the five-year interval, that's what it's good.
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, sorry about that.
Okay, well, we actually had some, we had some discussion about that tax. We didn't really understand which tax it was that you were talking about, but we want to make that same call evenly and find out everything we can, give it to our attorney and prepare paperwork to eliminate it as possible.
Yeah, because that would help all of us. I mean, she's a senior citizen, that's my neighbor. She can't wait to make it. I don't know how many, over 55 or whatever, but, you know, a lot of people make money, but, you know, I live on my fixed income. That's it.
Yeah.
Where was this meeting? What was, where was it going there?
For the school.
For the school?
For the schools, yeah.
And it's now going to the school?
It went to the school, but it was supposed to come off after that, so many years.
For the schools here in Hamilton?
Yeah.
And they're still getting, is what you're saying?
I don't know if they're still getting. I don't know where the tax, penny tax is going.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. If it's still going.
It was supposed to come off.
Our total taxes now, the products bought in Hamilton are 9%,
I know, we get that penny off and then that one with that tire truck, the citizens did not vote for that. And anytime you put penny tax on it, the citizens voted for that. We did not vote for that. It was before Mr. Williams was married. The previous, he said, "We got it." I said, "You don't need that tire truck for $600 something," whatever it was. Get fixed. We don't have big fires like big cities, you know? We don't. You know, and that's hurt them. That's hurt them. That's hurting the people that you want to retire to the city.
Right, but you're talking about taking 2% of your sales tax off.
And he can do it if he wants.
Well, let me ask you though. We take 2% of our sales tax off now that's coming in, what are we going to do for money? We're hurting for money right now for paving, for a lot of other things. If we take the 2%, and I don't want to think about the 2%, I don't get me wrong. I'm just saying if we drop 2% of our tax...
We'll get more money the more people shop here and go to the state, go elsewhere.
That's, that won't happen. We won't make up the 2%.
People are going to foot them, you see?
We're right now the low, as low as anybody around here.
No, 8% must be in my, my, my muscle shows.
Well, I said around here. Anybody that drives the muscle shows is going to save it.
Why? They're going to foot them. I've been road so long, I've got a bad idea with not the sales tax.
Well, if you drive the muscle shows, you get it.
Not going to foot them.
You're going to lose money. Well, you're still going to lose money if you pay for the tax on your gas and stuff to go over there and back. I mean, I'm not trying to, but it's true. I've looked at that and thought about it and I said, "Well, I think to do it, but I'd be stupid to do it and cost me more money."
See, that one year it was supposed to come off.
Instead of giving my money, though, to the city of Hamilton and our kids and our people in Hamilton.
Well, you're hurting the kids by leaving these taxes on that's supposed to be taken off in the 90s.
I already heard it.
What's happened, Jean? I think her point is this. She's saying that the tax is a tax on our city, but the city's not getting, but there's certain, what do we get?
Half percent.
Where's the other half percent going?
I don't know.
I'd have to get the tax out. See how it's going down.
See, we don't forget, what, 3% of the sales tax comes to the city, some of it goes to the county and for the schools and other things. So we don't get all the 9% anyway. And if it's a tax that affects the city's income, it would be tough to give it up, like you said.
We're hurting for money now. I mean, we can't even pay our street.
The reason why you're hurting for money is because businesses are moving.
The reason we're hurting for money is...
To stay here.
The reason we're hurting for money is because of the way the money has been spent before we got here.
Mr. Seck, you've been on city council a long time.
Me?
Yes, you have.
Me?
Yes.
When?
You was here the last time when a lady was here.
Lady, I don't know if you've been here. I've never been.
I've been here since 1993.
Well, I'm sorry to tell you, but I've never been on the city council before or any kind of city. It's my first time and that's really not a plan.
But also can you try and see if you look into an Alden or Sable Lot because that, because, like I said, shopping value is okay, but a lot of people on fixed income can't afford that 10% on top of the sales tax. They didn't charge a 10%, which is, I forgot what they call that for, Mr. Payton?
I think, yeah, your points, Laura, show your concern. We appreciate that very much. Your concern is like a lot of our other citizens. We want better things for our community and its citizens. And we've got to figure out what to do not to totally kill us though in our budget because we have to have certain dollars. We actually operate on a level budget. Whatever income and revenues we've taken in this year, we plan to spend that same amount of money in our next year's budget. We try to have a level budget and if we cut out too much of the things, we go in a big hole. So we have to be careful and balance these things.
I understand that, but still that one penny tax that paid for the tire truck. You know, when you ask for a tax hike, you ask for the citizens to vote for it. They vote for it. Best form will get knocked off for the tire truck.
Ms. Laura, I understand. The reason I wanted you here tonight, more than just one reason. I wanted you here to show our community on camera how caring citizens think about our city. And you have had your moments to talk with us and you've gone a little over the four minutes, but I wanted the people to see the concerns. A lot of people that live in this town have similar concerns and that voiced them to me. And when you talked to me the other day on the phone, I said, "Laura has some of the same concepts that other citizens have. That's why I wanted you to come here and talk to us tonight." We won't solve all the problems here tonight.
Oh, you can't do it overnight. I know that. I know it's good.
But let me say this. We thank you for being interested enough to get on the agenda. And the reason I wanted you here tonight is because you don't mind speaking your piece and you think about the city a lot. You would like for us to have a better grocery store. You have concerns there. You're concerned about taxes as we all are. So thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate you very much.
I appreciate y'all being with me.
And the things that you've said make a lot of sense. But still, in the whole scheme of things, we take a lot of advice from accounts that help us work our budgets, our auditors. And we're doing our best to make Hamilton a better place as a united group. And we really thank you for coming tonight.
Well, you did tell me down on the phone that you do have to go to your attorneys and you did tell me that.
Yeah, it takes it all. It's a system and we try to not go against the numbers. The numbers tell us about what we can do in our budget and we try to spend that money as wisely as we can. But thank you tonight for expressing yourself and we gave you time and we'll be talking from time to time going on and we'll miss...
See you tomorrow. Before you hang me up. Uh, the lady at Sable Lot, she's with Haleyville, she did say that if the city lets her come in and find a place, open up Sable Lot, that you were more than happy to train people to work here. She'll be the manager here. Now, Sable Lot, if you've ever been to Sable Lot, you know, they can't cuss for like 15 cents, 18 cents. And they're not old, but getting back young voters, but it's a lot cheaper for the elderly people. Say, we have higher taxes. I know that, but it's helped the elderly people here. And we have to have something for our kids because there's no activities for the kids.
We're looking to that suggestion and we don't know all the things that we can do, Ms. Laura, but we listened to you tonight and we thank you for the presentation you made. And we're all concerned about our cost and we're going to do our best to not put any taxes on the people that are absolutely necessary. And Ashwin and I will get with the ethics folks. Do you think this tax has been on since the 90s?
Yeah, they said it was, it's supposed to come off in five years. Remember that.
Ms. Laura, I wasn't trying to, it's not you I was talking to. What I'm worried about is the citizens of Hamilton. is the citizens, I haven't had a good streets to drive on, and things like that, well, we can't have good streets without tax money, we take off two cents, one cent, sales tax, we're hurting right now, biggest threats we got are streets, our streets have been fixed, we can, we need ten million dollars right now to fix streets.
Since, um, Mr. Williams was the mayor the first time, he fixed it one time, not this last time.
No, they haven't been fixed.
And he fixed it, by the way, and I got off to him about that, I said, you need to put that money with, say, Laura, you've got the money to fix the road, and you're not doing it. And I told him, he not gonna get elected again, and he did.
Right, we're, 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 we're trying to fix what's...
But I want him to be mayor again.
We, we're trying to fix what streets we can, but we can't do it with that money. Now, things are different now than what they were ten years ago.
Right, oh, I know that, but still, don't tell somebody he gonna take something off, and he don't take it off.
Well, I hadn't told him that.
He wasn't here.
Well, I was, well, I go.
But I know, I know he was getting frustrated with me, and I apologize for that, but I was speaking my heart.
Yeah, I wouldn't hear it, I'm sorry.
I might as well, anyway, this is a healthy discussion, we wanted you to come and have this discussion, we know your concern for your neighbors and your friends, and you came and talked from your heart, we can only say thank you, and, we appreciate it.
And I gotta call you all about the lease law, too, because, uh, we got straight dollars, we call them, don't pay them, and you call them and call them, and they don't come out. They don't come out at all, where is the, where is the, you may say, they always say, well, caller, I said, I have called you, my best, but they come out and call you, you don't bother to come out, and this...
We'll save that one for another.
Yeah. I mean, I thought, isn't there a lease law in the City of Hamilton?
Well, there is, but not many people about it.
I knew my little...
You're gonna have to get that upset, by, put somebody out there catching them.
Oh, it's, it's a session, we're gonna duke it out, maybe.
See, every time you bring up...
Don't put that on camera.
Every time you bring up something, I just gotta pay the girl, too.
Oh, but he knows I'm joking, he knows I'm joking.
I like, uh, we have...
But I, I mean, I love Hamilton, I've been up here, from holidaying, moved up here when I was married with my cousin, and he had a cough fit, 'cause he was blatantly blind, he went to the prison to work up, to the state, something about the energies for the blind, and then, uh, I've always loved it up here, and everything was thriving then.
Well, I've been here eighty-four years.
Huh?
I've been here eighty-four years.
I ain't been here that long, but I love it.
I just tried some.
And I was, and I will beat anybody trying to stop him, or the city council getting this, I will tell them, I think, if they not stop none of you, we're gonna see you.
If we don't have any other issues for voters tonight, we'll...
Thank you, sir, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate it. I have to talk to her still.
You come next, Sid.
She needs that, uh, we, we'll do a motion now to attorney.
One other question about this, Ms. Bailey, is she a, does she live here now?
If you have a question. Yes. And she's asked to join it.
Okay.
She's, she's Mr. Guthrie, that owns the chicken franchises, that's her daughter, their daughter, she's lived here, bought her a house, and, and she's doing volunteer work in our city, and she's asked to serve on this board.
She's my neighbor. And she's young, and pretty.
Anything else tonight before we do...
Stay on your feet.
Motion, make a motion.
Second.
Third.
All right. Thank you all very much.